All right, good evening and welcome to tonight's Waseca Public Schools regular meeting. It still says work session on the agenda. A regular meeting. Today is Thursday, January 20th, 2022. It is 5:30 PM and we are meeting in the central building, second floor conference room. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
First and a second, Katie and then Charlie. Elizabeth, you're taking notes, right? Yes. Any discussion? Hearing none will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Recognition of visitors. We don't have anyone here in person and I'm assuming we didn't have any emails today.
We did not.
Thank you. Moving on then to payment of claims. Director Dunn, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I took a look at the bills and the claims for the month of December. Had a question for Elizabeth, which she answered for me. So I will make a motion that we approve accounts payable, which does not include December dental for $1,516,397.8 and also for payroll,
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And then we'll move on to our information items, beginning with the superintendent report.
Good evening. I'm going to pass around our vision card for this year, just as I reference it a few times through our strategic plan, our report this evening. So as you know, we've gone through an extensive process this year to take our strategic plan and our strategic objectives and create what we call a vision card, which is really kind of the action item steps of how we're going to be, how we're going to be doing our work over the course of this, of this school year. And as I have done with the administration and they're doing with their staffs as well, we're revisiting that now mid-year to see how things are going. And so I really just wanted to put this in front of you. Recognize that on some of the assessments that we'll be finishing up with, so student achievement, teaching and learning, academic programming, it really comes down to our assessments. It's how we're measuring the success of those things. And so we have some mid-year assessments, student grades. With conferences coming up next week, teachers are updating things for all of our students. So at the February work session, we will be able to present with you pretty much an entire mid-year progress report of where we are on this vision card. But I wanted to give you a copy of this, just hard copy once again as a reminder, in case you haven't looked at it in a while, of some of the things we're focusing on. So for the area of student support, for example, you know, we'll increase behavior and mental health supports as the objective on our strategic plan. We're working with Fernbrook to work on seeing how much we're able to support students who need support from Fernbrook. But we're also looking at our students eating. Are we getting the appropriate nutrition into our students? So increasing our student participation, particularly in breakfast is one of our particular goals that we had going on from there. And as you see here, we have a baseline that we're kind of establishing. Some of this was established last year, some of it were established in this year. Talk about progress, where we want to be over the course of a year. And then the vision is the ultimate goal, where we want to be long-term for our district. What you'll find added on here next year, as we do this, is there'll be a kind of a intervention column here to the left. What if we went backwards? What are we going to do? I don't foresee that happening based on anything we're seeing right now, but we always have to understand that could happen. We'll work on it that way. So as we work through this, I brought this to our administration early in January and we reviewed this, we reviewed our operational plan, and it was exciting because it was, there was a lot of clicking and a lot of aha. And so now when we go to recreate the 2223 vision card, some of the clunky of this year will help smooth itself out who have now been through it before. So we're still establishing a lot of progress towards our goals. Number of unfilled positions is a particular focus in our workforce. We don't want to have unfilled positions. And a strategy, which the board actually, on their board's three-year agenda, was about negotiations and making sure we're improving contracts for teachers and all of our staff. And we're making progress in all those areas as well. So my strategic plan portion of my report tonight was really just to put this back in front of you, remind you again of the things that we're working on. We take strategic plan level, operational plan, now we're in this vision card land here. So what actually are we going to measure? And what it's, what we're going to find here, I think, is, and we'll, we'll find out, but what I'm seeing right now is three of our focus areas here, we're really going to be measuring with much the same thing. And so if we're measuring three items with the exact same tool, the next time we refresh the 24 to 29 strategic plan, we could consolidate some of those things maybe and start seeing what we're looking at. Well, this plan was created for the needs we had at the time and it's still all very appropriate and relevant. But as we continue to grow, we'll continue to put measurable items to it and adapt accordingly. So. I appreciate the time tonight, really just to put that back in front of you. So when we meet in early February, you will have had a quick look glance at it a few weeks prior before we go into each area and see where we are at this point in the school year.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. The next portion of the report tonight, I did want to talk about our health and safety update, particularly what's happening with COVID and where we are in our, in our buildings and talk about what's happening regionally, what's happening with our protocols and some things that we, we could make some adjustments to as we continue to move forward. So right now, we certainly are seeing students and staff staying home when they're sick. I'm not seeing staff or students in the buildings regularly with symptoms. When they do have symptoms, we're working with them and their families to be able to, to go home and stay home. We're not really seeing people who are trying to be here when they're ill and that's, we were very appreciative of that. Student absences are right about the last few weeks, the last week and a half or so, we've been hovering right around 10% of our students gone on any given day for all illnesses. That's not just all illnesses or, or other family events. So when you think about world's best workforce, holding us accountable, it'll hold us accountable if we average less than 90% attendance over the course of an entire school year. And we've been well into the mid-90s all school year, lower 90s for some of the school year. And, but these last two weeks have been a little lower because more people have been out ill. But we're not at a, an alarming rate of overall absences at this very moment. Staffing, we're not immune to the staff challenges that we're facing in terms of people who are getting sick and having to stay home and, and be gone for their number of days. And we do have, we've had a number of days, particularly this week, where we don't have subs in every classroom. And so teachers are filling in for each other and they're working things around. And the language I used yesterday with the staff at one building was, we still are very survivable. We're not pleasant, but we're still very survival when it comes to staff. But we're watching that very closely because when you look at some of our colleagues throughout the state, not too many locally, but throughout the state who have had to go to distance learning, it's really been about the staff. And our staff has fortunately been, been here, been here for whenever they can be. In terms of what's happening right now with COVID-19, we, it's a little bit hard to compare apples to apples in this because as the CDC changed their definition of what the isolation time would be, from 10 days to five days, you look at what you consider to be an active positive case. And so up in this point in the pandemic, the school year for sure, we've been using that 10-day benchmark as an active positive case. You test positive, you're positive for those 10 days. We're starting to see some of our neighbors around us who have adjusted to the five-day and some workplaces who adjust to the five-day. And so when you compare who they consider to be active positives versus our active positives, they're not always the same. And I'm going to tell, just give you a little bit of our story here. So right now, if I apply that 10-day standard of active COVID cases, we do have 3.5% of our students who would be actively positive at this time, which is just about, just over fif, in the upper 50s of students in all buildings combined. Not clustered anywhere particularly actually, pretty well distributed, except for I think there's only a handful at WIS. However, if I apply the five-day standard to those numbers and I look at who's on the back end of their isolation, that number goes down to less than 1%, 0.8%. So three-fourths of our current active cases are on the back end of their, of their isolation period, which is a, which is a positive sign for our district, that we aren't having a lot of new, the same proportion of new infections this particular week. With staff, I will tell you right now, using the 10-day standard, we have 17 staff that would be positive. If I use the five-day standard, that goes down to four. And so we do have some staff who are at home waiting out their 10-day period, who have not had symptoms, who are feeling okay, would love to get back to work to fill some of those classrooms, but they're, we're still doing that. Now, I will tell you though, that I'm, I'm very comfortable with the fact that we haven't moved from 10-day to a five-day to this point. Well, we wanted to see what the last week and a half has, has done. I think it is time to consider that, that move, but I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But I don't think it would have been appropriate a week ago, because I think we were just working through what we have for current cases. Contact tracing is becoming more of a challenge as we start to look through those, look through those cases. Our health, health and office staff are still continuing to try to do that and we're not deciding that we're going to stop. You may have heard that some districts have sent a letter just kind of saying, you know, assume you've been exposed, if you come to school, we're not going to do that anymore. I'm not ready to say we're going to do that. I am asking for patience though, because it's got to the point where if we have several things to go through in a given day, it might not happen that day, it might happen till the next day. And just, just be patient with us as we try to do that. Because I don't want to necessarily go away from that practice altogether. I think it's important that families know what's going on, but at the same time, just please be patient with us as we work through that. The alternative is, we just can't get to the volume, we won't do it anymore. And I don't think that's a better option for us right now. It, it might be at some point. Then the last thing on, on this particular set of bullets, my notes, is that we did have, so we've been offering saliva tests for our staff and students as they need it. They're, they're the vault tests that we, they, they take home, they, or they do in school, they bring back, we mail them in, they have to go online and do a, it's like a Zoom meeting or something to be able to do that. It's a self-administered thing. But it takes a couple days. By the time that gets into the, gets into the testing center, we have to UPS them in, which means that it's usually me, so I'm going that direction, we're driving them by UPS whenever they are. And, and that's fantastic that we've had the opportunity to provide that for staff. It's not very fast, not very effective when you're symptomatic, because it just doesn't come back quickly enough. The other thing is, that's, those are no longer valid after January 31st. That's something that the Department of Health said, we're not going to support that particular test any longer. So we did order, what, the, the brand is Binax. Binax, now Rapid Test, they're the nasal squabs. And we've got about, well, we got, I think they, they give us six per student count for the first run. And so those came early this week. We do have access to those. They're take-home tests. They're not someone to be administering here at school. They're self-administered. But if any staff or student wants a rapid test, particularly for symptomatic folks, so they can know right away whether or not we just, this is positive or not, we have access to those. So I feel good about that. We are going to try to ask individuals if they want to just screen. I feel good, but I might have been exposed, so I want to take a test, at least for the next few weeks while they're valid. I'd like to try to keep using the saliva tests for that purpose, just so that we don't diminish our supply of the rapid tests any faster than we have to. But that won't be something we're going to struggle over. That's what it has to go. So where do we go from here? You know, my, our current procedure is based on a previous recommendation from the CDC and our previous information that we had. And that was essentially, if you're positive, you're, you're, it's a 10-day, it's a 10-day quarantine isolation from that. One thing that's interesting about that though is, as the language has evolved from positive tests to onset of symptoms, we are having some, some conversations with families about when did the symptoms really start? I didn't test until three days after the, after I started having symptoms. When can I really come back? And that's become a, almost a little bit of a negotiation session at times with our health staff and families about what actually is the, is the time they can return. We want to have kids back in the building and, and staff back in the building as quickly as we can, safely. And again, I didn't recognize, recommend any changes over the last two weeks, just because of what was going on. What I'm seeing right now though, I would propose that we move to the CDC guidelines when it comes to quarantine isolation. And the, the summary of that is, if you're positive, it's a five-day isolation from that, from the date of the, and I would like to, I would like to go for, to say date of, from date of positive test. So we don't get into the discussion about when did symptoms really start or not. And it might encourage people to test sooner. Because if I know if I have symptoms, I'm going to test right away, date of, date of positive test. After they come back on days six through 10, and this is based on CDC guidelines, they would be required to wear a mask, those, those six, days six to 10 when they came back. Now, the option is, if you want to wear a mask, you can take your 10 days, nothing wrong with that. It also does state that you have to be fever-free for 24 hours before you come back. So that's the, that's the difference there. And this is assuming you're asymptomatic and you're feeling better, or you're feeling better. If you still have symptoms, please stay out for the duration of the time. Very similar with, with if you were exposed. Now quarantines, based on you're exposed even in home, that would take some of the in-home quarantines down to five days and then back to school with a mask for five more days, if, if, if that's the way, you can choose to quarantine the whole time. But right now, we've got kids that are out for 24 days, based on our current practices, because of having to wait till the end of their family members' isolation to start their quarantine. And that's not something we want to continue, I don't think anyway. I think we need to get the students back to, back to school. Vaccination-wise, there's no quarantine required at all, recommended at all. We're still not, currently we're recommending quarantine if you're exposed, except for if you're a, it's a household contact, then we are asking you to take those few, those days, unless you're vaccinated. If you're vaccinated, then you don't have to quarantine at all. And I would say we continue with that process of recommending. Some folks are choosing not to and we're working through that as best we can. So that was a mouthful. We have options though. We have, I think it makes perfect sense to get our staff and our kids back in buildings. And we can, if they have to wear a mask for a few days, do they come back, particularly after a positive case, that'll be fine. I don't want to become, I want to be very realistic about that. And what I'm hearing other districts report is that our kids are being respectful, they're doing it. We're not having to be the mask police. Please just wear your mask for the next five days. We're not gonna, I, I don't want to have to follow you around. And, and I don't think that's productive. But I think it's, just please, just please do that. I don't think going to a, personally, I don't, we could go to a mask mandate. I don't think that's a good choice for our district. I don't think that really serves the purpose we're trying to, to get after here. At this point, I'm not seeing any, when I look regionally with some districts that do have mask mandates, they're not any fewer, more cases than we have. And so as much as I, I would like to think that they're doing that for the reason that fits best for them, I don't think that's going to make a difference for us. And I, but, but I, I was in WIS today, the junior, senior high yesterday, and girls, you can weigh in on this too, if you have input. And I was at Hartley yesterday. And there is a fair number of students and staff choosing to wear masks already right now, that I don't think that's going to be a single-out issue if we ask people to come back and wear those masks for a few days. It's not, I don't think anyone's going to notice any, it's not going to be a, because I did have some concern about, well, how do we single those, those individuals out? But I don't think so the way it's going right now. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, we've, like, I've noticed people that, like, yeah, like you asked them, like, oh, are you, like, coming back from quarantine or is it your family kind of thing? But like, no one ever, like, says anything really in like a disrespectful way.
Good, okay, yeah.
The people that are choosing to wear them are just wearing them and people aren't really asking that many questions unless they know that they've been sick. Like, are you feeling any better?
Right, more, we care about you type thing.
Also, it's just kind of normalized by now.
Yeah, I think so too. Okay, very good. So based on the resolution that we passed in August, we talked about what our health and safety plan would be at that time. And we don't have to pass another resolution, because it says, we will adjust as the conditions needed, are needed. But we also made a commitment to each other that we wouldn't be making any significant changes without us all sitting here at the table. So that's, that's part of the purpose why I'm here tonight to share this with you. So if you, with, I wouldn't have done it prior to our conversation. So if you have any concerns or thoughts one way or the other that we could consider, I'd love to open that up for questions or conversation. Otherwise, that's where I would propose we go with our next steps.
Can you, can you make up a flow chart for this, so that we have this, this happens, you've got it?
Yep, and it will be, and we'll post this on our website as well for individuals, yeah.
Because there's a flow chart right now and so it would just seem to be updated for the, the five days.
Yeah, and this is directly, this is what I printed off today from the CDC. Unfortunately, we have some good partners at County Health who sent that to me. But yes, Charlie, that's exactly right.
Good, yeah. Just so we can be clear with people where we're at and what we're doing.
And for the workload of our staff, I would propose we start that with new cases, rather than try to retro back. There's a few families I've been working with who we might be able to call and allow their students to come back a little quicker. Staff, I might, if they're out right now, see if they could come back or tomorrow. Otherwise, we would just apply this to going forward. So otherwise, the workload for Deb and the team to try to go back and recalculate people's dates would probably be a little bit challenging.
And so to clarify, so you're, we'll recommend the five days from the date of your positive test. That's the recommendation? And then obviously, without, with improved symptoms or fever-free, like, like don't come back if you still have symptoms kind of thing. So, okay.
And that's all basically word for word what the CDC is recommending?
It is, it is.
Seems like we're not going out on a limb by following what they're recommending.
We're not. And, and the, the reality is, our neighboring districts have all made this adjustment, but that was right for them. And the, I'm glad they experimented with it first. But the language was, it's been a game changer to take 75% of your current people who are out of school and allow them to come back to school, which is what we want, right? And I think our, my comment from the staff today at the high school, I had a chance to talk to Dr. Miller and he said it with the number of absences we have, it's just hard. It's just, it's fine, it's okay, it's just hard. Particularly if we have, you know, I don't, I mean, I don't want to use everything as a sports analogy, but if we have some teammates on the bench ready to get back in the game and they're on day seven, eight, nine, I think we're at the place in the pandemic where that's an appropriate thing to do.
And the other schools that have already switched to this five-day, I mean, they're not noticing a spike in cases because they're having people come back sooner?
They're not. In fact, I talked to Jeff, to New Home Superintendent this morning, who did this the day it was implemented. And they had, I think, three new cases today. So their cases have dropped significantly, similar to what other, other areas in the country have. So I think we're getting, we're getting through the surge. I will say that it's a little bit, I just would want to caution folks from the county numbers, because those don't count a lot of rapid tests that people are taking. They're sometimes delayed. Think about the three-day holiday weekend and then you see a whole bunch on that Tuesday. Well, that's maybe four or five days worth of tests. What we're seeing in our buildings is the most accurate and up-to-date information that I can go with. And that's the numbers I shared with you today, which is trending stable to down.
So do you, we think this was just a holiday surge is what we're seeing here right now? Do we, do the, does the CDC anticipate this, this level going down? Of course, you know, we've had so many cases, you know, that at some point, at some point, they're going to start tapering off, I would think.
Yeah, the recent, the most recent information I've seen on that would, would guess the end of next week, middle, end of next weekend to early February, seeing this, the spike statewide, starting to go down. For us, I would anticipate that's, we've always, for better or worse, we've been a little bit ahead of that pace, statewide. And so I could see us probably getting better sooner than that. And we have, we've dealt with a few activity reschedules, we've dealt with a few things going on, but that happens in every, any given year, not to minimize anything, because it doesn't deserve to be minimized. But it's not been overwhelming. Our, Mr. Head of our, and the athletic staff and activity staff have been doing a great job. Had to, we've had to cancel some things and that's unfortunate, but we've got kids in school for the school day.
Are you generally reporting, or might it make sense to start reporting absences in general as opposed to COVID-specific? Because we don't know why people are, did they take a test? Did they do a home test? So it almost seems like measuring just absences as a, as a norm almost seems to make more sense than trying to be specific with it, so.
Yeah, yes, it's, it's true. And we do report that through our world's best workforce report every year. So.
It's the time of year that that happens anyway.
Yeah, and that, and that's harder to, right now, I think we've been so focused on pandemic-related COVID absences, but in terms of making, changing our COVID protocols, that's appropriate. But we are watching absences in general.
All right, so if, if there's no objections, then I would say, yeah, move forward with your change. And I think the board is in agreement with all the reasons you laid out and so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to Deb Wavishal and her team for all the work that they, that they are doing daily, so. All right, any other questions for Mr. Hesbit before we, before we move on? Thank you. We'll move on then to financial report from, an enrollment from Elizabeth Berry. Hi, Elizabeth.
Thank you all for your time this evening. I've got just a very brief update for you. So using the information that we continue to track on a monthly basis, so comparing this year's budget and year-to-date versus last year's budget and year-to-date, we're really going to be starting that revision mode right now. So we're, we're off and running, we're working with the site principals and all the other department heads on, let's take a look at, now that we've seen a half a year gone through, you know, how are we trending? What do we need to tighten up budget-wise? And so, again, using the information that we present on a monthly basis, looking at our monthly enrollment, what can we do to prepare our final budget, which we will bring to you in March, which will then help us create our preliminary budget for the 2223 school year? So again, just in full swing with, with, with that process. One other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, we're just, we're, we're being as fiscally responsible as we possibly can with continuing to maximize, excuse me, the federal dollars that are available to us through all of the ESTR dollars, year dollars. I know we use a lot of acronym. And we do try to lay that out in our budget and merit system where there's further information on that. But one of the new requirements as well is for our ESTR's $3, which is the, the largest, the largest amount of money to school districts. We need to make sure that our plans are available to our community members, should they have questions on, how are we spending those dollars? So if you go onto our website and the, your departments, and then district office, and finance, you'll see a link there. The Department of Education has done a great service to all districts. Basically, they've posted all of our plans for everybody. And so they've just allowed districts to put a link on our own websites to direct them to the Department of Education. And every district that submitted a plan for their ESTR $3 are then listed on the Department of Ed website. So that is available to us. We did post that, I think, this week, if not last week. So again, it's under departments, district office, and the finance tab. You'll see that information. So you, so any community member can look at what we have written for those ESTR $3. And that is available to us through, really, August of 2024. So we do have some time with that to make sure, again, that we're strategically using those dollars and being accountable for that. So again, just trying to provide as much transparency as possible, the funds that are available to us. That was my update for the evening, unless anybody else had any questions or comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Elizabeth. All right, I'm ready to move on then to committee and board member reports. I'm going to make Scott, Scott start us off, because I know he's got a pile of stuff he wants to share, so.
Oh, great. So I was able to attend the Minnesota School Board Association Convention last Thursday and Friday, and actually Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And some of the cool things, if anybody wants to look for the keynote speaker, was, and I cannot think of her name because she's not in my book. She actually was a fill-in for her dad who got sick. But they still talk about the same thing. It's the question behind the question, it's a book and it's a series. And it's, for her, it was a way of life. It's, it's actually one of the books that I think I am actually going to read. But it, they did a really good job explaining it. But I think the biggest thing that I took from, from the convention was actually, Minnesota State has eight areas of excellence throughout the state. And actually, Clinton Link is actually in the process of, of using one of them. of, of using one of them in, for a class for next year. But the ones that were there was a transportation center of excellence, and then agriculture was also there. And they have some really cool things, like students can get up to three years' worth of scholarships for workforce development scholarships for twenty-five hundred dollars apiece. And if you, if you take a two-year course, it's twenty-five hundred dollars a year. And if you go to a four-year after that, transfer to a four-year, you can get a third year of twenty-five hundred dollars. So I thought that was really cool for our students. But they have trailers that they can use, they get into the drones, where they'll come out with, with trailers that have drones in them. They have, they have other, what was the big one? The Combine, they have a, they have an interactive thing that you can do in one of their trailers for that. They can bring semis out for kids that are interested in that kind of stuff. So teachers, the CTE teachers can use all of these different resources, and it's all free of charge.
Cool.
Is it similar to like what Riverland has a little bit?
Some of it, some of it is, yep.
That's awesome.
So basically, you can kind of bring this program to your school and, all right.
They can come for a day, they can come for a week, they can, if your, if your teacher's not real strong in an area, they can, they can teach that little part of it, they'll do that for you, there's no charge, they, it's, it's really a cool thing. And then I was, they, those two taught one of the courses that I went to, and I just thought it was, they did such an amazing job. Them two team up all the time together, I guess, and it was just really neat talking to them. I actually, there's, there were three individuals from Minnesota State, and the other one was the one that Clint has dealt with, and I, I didn't even understand what he was, until I took the course that afternoon. And then it's like, oh, wow, I see all of the stuff that, that plays into it. That was the big one for me, so, all the career opportunities and, and, and things that you can get out of it.
Cool.
So, that's it.
Well, thanks for representing the board.
It was, it was good, it was good, there's a lot of, lot of conversations. I met a couple of superintendents and sat with, I did the Wednesday night early bird, and the discussions that we had about what was going on in our districts, and with, not only with COVID, but other, other situations, was really nice to, to communicate and, and get them, get their feedback and, and give them feedback for what they were going through, so.
That's always the nice part about the conference, is just talking to other, other districts, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, so, thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
As far as committees, Personnel Committee, I attended, not today, but the one before, Facilities Task Force meeting, and then, of course, we had our Policy Committee meeting. And Personnel, I guess, the main thing I'd like to mention there is we've hired three full-time subs, correct?
Yeah, they're professional teaching interns is what they're called, but yeah.
Okay, okay. And they're working in the district every day, I believe, four days a week?
They're, they're gonna be subbing for us, yeah, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, four days a week, and they're still pending their licensure as they finish up, because they're December graduates, but then they'll start hopefully next week.
And they're all graduates of Minnesota State, Macato.
Correct, they all student taught with us in the fall, so we know they're gonna be excellent additions to our team.
So, three subs there, we probably could use a whole lot more, but at least we, we do have those three in addition to our other subs. And another thing we talked about was, and I don't know if you have an update on this, Lead for Minnesota, which is kind of centered here in Wasika, we possibly might get an intern just for the school next year, anything?
No, nothing new has come on that.
Nothing new on that? So, that's, that's it.
Awesome, thank you. Grant, anything to share?
I was out for some time, so I don't have any board member reports.
Okay.
Uh, I was a part of PG and D monthly meeting, and we talk again about culturally, culture, culturally responsive teaching, and they started to put a plan together, what will happen next year, every semester, and it's very interesting. And actually, Brooke was using strategic, strategic plan, and she actually was able to find stuff there that fill, you know, to this culture, culturally, I cannot say that, responsive teaching.
I don't even wanna try to say it, so.
No, no, I will not, because I'm a sample, but yeah.
Okay.
Then we had negotiations, and I think we are progressing very well, and Eric will have some updates for later, and it's very interesting, and yeah, we're getting closer. That's all that I have.
Awesome, thank you. Student Council, Lindsay and Eliza, thanks, we haven't had both of you guys here for a while, so thanks for being here.
All right, well, I guess for my notes, the girls' basketball team is home tomorrow. I believe it's a seven o'clock game, the pep band will be there, so that'll be fun. And boys' hockey is also home tomorrow. The one-act play is titled Rapunzel Uncut, and those performances are this Saturday at 2:00 p.m. and at 7:00 p.m. So please come and support our one-act before we go to competition on the twenty-ninth of January. So really looking forward to it. And the band is preparing for their Bandorama concert on February fourteenth, where all bands, fifth grade through the high school, will be performing and getting to play some songs together and performing for each other, so it's a super fun night, so we haven't had it in a while, so we're looking forward to that.
Will that be at the, will that be in the pack, or will it be in the gym?
Believe it will be in the pack.
Okay, cool, I love it when all the, when everyone's on stage together, that's cool.
It's so fun. And then we can talk about something together, probably.
For my notes, I have, the choir is preparing our music for spring contests for all of the small ensembles and the large group ensemble. And then boys' basketball is away in St. James tomorrow, and we're in Marshall on Saturday. So we got two big long games. And then FFA is preparing for FFA Week, and we're getting our different events scheduled, and like the teacher appreciation breakfast, and those kind of things figured out. And the rodeo that we normally go to every year, we cannot go this year again, it was canceled, so that was a little sad news, but, oh, well. And then we have snow week coming up in two weeks, like a week.
First week of February.
Yeah. And so we have all the dress-up days set up, and we did a lot more advertising than we have in past years. There's posters all over the school, you can't really miss them. And we have the dance on Friday of the week.
Yes, February fifth.
Yeah, so we have the dance, and it's gonna be three dollars up front and five dollars at the door. So we're gonna give a little money for fundraising, pay for like the DJ and everything. And then we have the talent show, and we have quite a few acts, I've heard, I don't know exactly how many, but.
Nineteen, I think.
Yeah, and then the student council is trying to put something together for our own little routine, but we don't know what we're doing yet, so it's a surprise.
And I heard new this year, the talent show will be in the evening, right? So they want the public to come, so it's not just gonna be.
Oh, cool, awesome.
I believe it will be three dollars for admission, I can double-check on that, but I think it's three dollars. And it's at eight oh one p.m. because of voting, so we're starting right after eight o'clock.
And for your snow week, can you explain to me, I saw there's a new event this, this year, there's a dodgeball?
Dodgeball.
Can you explain what the dodgeball contest is gonna be?
So, for, we wanted something that was like, not necessarily a pep rally, because we know, like, there's, like, a lot of students don't really, like, pay attention, and there's not a lot of, like, you know, stuff to do right now for a pep rally. So we wanted to do a dodgeball tournament, because that would get a lot of people, like, involved, and it'd be a really fun activity, and it would fill that space of, like, the pep rally time. And so our dress-up day for Friday is team-themed, so you dress up as your team, like, you all dress up in the same kind of corresponding outfits, or however you wanna do it. And so, yeah, teams can sign up, I don't think there's a limit on, like, how many can be in a team.
There are eight players on a team, and then you can have three to four managers. People that wanna be involved but don't really wanna play dodgeball.
Our goal is to get as much participation as possible, and we were gonna do a volleyball tournament, but we thought that would take too much time, so we switched to dodgeball, because that's a little bit quicker, and we could get way more teams through, and then it's gonna be kind of like a tournament to go towards, like, the overall winner.
And it's by grade, too, so freshmen, sophomore, junior, and senior as well, play versus each grade, and then there'll be a big championship game at the end to see who will win. So it's, I hope people get excited for it, I'm hoping a lot of people sign up.
For in the halls so far, so.
Oh, that's good. I think it sounds really fun, so kudos to you guys for coming up with something new, and, yeah, that's.
New and different.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome, thank you, anything else going on, or that's about, that's a lot, so.
That's about it.
Awesome, thank you. Charlie?
So I've been to a couple of policy meetings, we, or a couple of committee meetings. We reviewed the policies here last, on the tenth here, so we will be approving some of them tonight. And also, we were at the WEA negotiations here on, on, I think it was Monday, I believe it was Monday this week, so. Like Adita said, it's moving along, it's moving along, slow but sure, so I think that's, I think that's it for what I've been up to, so.
I don't have anything.
Nothing? I just had, I wanted to add on the Personnel Committee that we did talk about potentially reviewing the rate for substitute pay this summer, so that might come up this summer, I just wanted to make note of that. And then negotiations, we have three of our unions, we have a tentative agreement, the para group is on tonight to, for us to, they, they have ratified, so, so now it's our turn to approve the contract and get that one finished. And so I just wanna commend the para group for being the first to ratify, so, so I really appreciate that. But that, that contract, I was actually, I really, I really appreciate how that, how that meeting with them went back and forth, and I, I really appreciate, I like how the contract ended up, so that was a good contract, so, while they all are, but. At the end of that one, I felt really good about that one, so, and I think that's all I had as well. Oh, well, I did wanna mention, we haven't met as a legislative committee yet, but I did wanna mention that there is a letter that has been signed by a few different groups, like MSBA and MREA, calling for the governor and legislature session in general to make a priority to eliminate the cost subsidy, which is the special education funding, and so I just wanted to highlight that, that that is one of the goals of a couple of the groups that we are, that we get updates on, so.
I think we're scheduled for next Thursday, I think, actually, committee?
Yeah, but that was something that came out last week in my emails, and I just thought, I just wanted to highlight that that is a priority, it's a priority every year, but one of these years, maybe it'll actually happen, so.
Can I add one thing?
Yep.
So I didn't know this, but they expressed it at the, at the convention that the MSBA, Minnesota's MSBA, has actually left the national organization, and they're looking to.
Kind of create a new.
Create a new with about nineteen states right now that are, that are gonna come together and start working together. So I just thought that was important to put out there.
Yeah, there was an email within the last couple of weeks, too, about why they left, and I think there was good reasons.
When they discussed it, it did make a lot of sense, if your, if your, yep, if your, if your things aren't in alignment, then, then you're not doing enough for you.
That's great, because that was, I was reading about it, and I just didn't have a chance to ask, can you answer my question?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, moving on then to recognitions and positive board feedback. Scott, you wanna start us off again?
Sure, so, two things, I had it pulled up. The robotics teams did very well in their first competitions, so that was nice to see. Also gymnastics had a, had a pretty good weekend, let's all head.
Awesome.
Okay, and I was gonna mention the gymnastics, too. Kim Wetland, I think, has been our head coach for like six years, and they had the highest score they ever had in a meet here recently, so I thought that was, that was kind of a neat thing. And then I would like to thank all the people, all the staff that have stepped up to the plate when we've had all these people out sick or absences or whatever. We've had a lot of teachers and a lot of paras, as well as other people, who have said, you know, I'll cover a class during my prep period, or paras going above and beyond to cover classes, and teachers dividing up classes, and I'll take a few of the kids, you take a few of the kids, and, and I know that's been going on all over the district, and I just wanted to say, I think we really, we really appreciate that, because with all that's going on with COVID and just the normal winter flu and stuff like that, there's no way we were ever gonna have enough subs, and they've, they've stepped up a lot of them and gone above and beyond, and I think we need to be thankful for that, because that's kind of kept the ship afloat in many ways. So thanks for all the staff that at some point in time have, have done that and kept things going.
I'm gonna say congratulations to, I think, ten students who are all on the snow court, or the two, to the guys in girl's snow court, so congratulations to all of them. Yeah, I have the list somewhere, but, also, I believe there was twenty-nine students who qualified for state BPA. There's a listing that came out, there is a number of them who were on there multiple times, so congratulations to them and a tribute to our excellent students. And lastly, Eric mentioned as well that Deb Wabashal and all of our health staff work hard and have worked hard for a number of years, so it's worth recognizing that and thanking them for all that they do.
Thank you, Adita.
Just I'm so thankful, you know, whatever is going on around, and plus winter, it's not very nice to us, I mean, it's nice, but it's very cold, that our kids have opportunity and they can go, you know, sports, academic activities and everything, and I want to just say thank you to everybody who, you know, who make this happen, because it gives them a chance to just have almost normal, you know, school year, and it's amazing what they do, and just persevere and continue.
I would like to thank Anna Pollak for, or who was our play director for the one-act, for all of her hard work in making it go together and getting us ready for our performances coming up. So I'm, we are super glad that she's been working with us, and so I just wanna thank her for all of her hard work.
All right.
Yeah, I was gonna cover what Dave said with the teachers, with my sister being one, you know, I see a lot of that her, like, working during her prep hour and stuff, and it's really cool that the teachers are able to, you know, keep us running, even though, like, you know, and still keep their own stuff in line.
Yeah, I'd like to, just to speck about the boys' basketball team here, a couple of weeks ago, they did pull out a win over, over Bluth, which was, was good to see. They were behind by ten, twelve points at one point in the game, and they pulled it together and got, and won, so that was a, that was a big win for the team. And of course, we didn't, last Saturday night, they played St. Clair minus three of the starters, and they, unfortunately, they lost that game, but they played hard, and the kids, kids are putting it out there, they're, they're, they're working hard, so. Congratulations to the basketball teams, you know, and I did go to a girls' team, and I think we lost that one, but, but kids are out there just working their hearts out, and it's good to see that, and creating that team, that team effort, so, that's, that's what I got.
Cool. I just wanted to mention, it was cool to see Craig Brendan get on the Board of Directors for the MREA Board. He has a lot of passion for schools, and to take rural schools into the next forefront is really, it's neat that he's so excited about that. That's cool.
I had that one on my list as well, so, yeah, no, I think.
BPA on my list.
He'll be a great, he'll be a really good voice. My other one that I had was, I wanted to commend the, the, the school store, Blue Jay Basics, for joining the Chamber of Commerce, and they are the first student-led business to join the chamber, so that was really cool, so. I just like that we finally have that store up and running, and.
It, yeah, it's really nice to see that it's up and.
We're working on getting varsity jackets in the store right now, which I know, like, a couple of us, like, I got mine through Amazon, but I know a couple of us have gotten ours through other sources, because Four Seasons doesn't offer them, but it'd be really cool to have, like, an in-school one.
Yep. Yeah, my son was ordering a jacket, and they, so they had to bring in sizes for him to try, and then after that data, like, we should just have these in the store, which makes a lot more sense, yep.
I was just wondering, yes, the girls, that maybe, not this year, but next year, the school board could have a dodgeball team?
Oh, gosh.
You're welcome to join this year, signups are still up.
And of course. And of course, we would win the championship, because we'd pass a resolution that says.
That might be the only way.
Yeah, conflict of interest.
I think the only way that that competition would happen is if we all got a ball and Dave stood in the middle. And then we, no. I'm gonna, yeah, shoot that one down. All right. Thank you, Dave. Moving on then to our action items. If everyone's ready. Can I get a motion for item A?
I'll make a motion that we approve the acceptance of the gifts and donations that we recently received.
Yeah, thank you. That's really generous.
It is very.
A first and a second.
So on, on your sheet here, this is not the updated one? Because there were two more that came in, correct?
Yeah.
Good. So.
Oh, well, I have the total as forty-seven fifty. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
And that is the correct amount? Okay. It's like, I printed mine out at home. So, okay. Awesome. If there's no further questions or comments, then we'll call for a vote. Since Caitlin's not here, I'll just call, I'll just make the roll call. So I'll try. Adita?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie is yes. Katie?
Yes.
And Charlie?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item B?
I make, make a motion to approve account payable dental for the month of November in the amount of $7,055.01.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item C?
I'll move, we approve the 2021, 2022 seniority list.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion?
I just wanna know what I looked through there. And there was a lot of people on there who had zero years prior experience, which means they've been here their whole career. So that's worth recognizing. Thank you.
Yep. Well, it was weird this year not to have Deb Yesby at the top. Like, I can't remember, Ms. Shukti is at the top right now. But I was like, what? That's Ron. Oh, wait. So, yes. But yeah, no, I, I really think it's cool that we've had people that have spent decades with us. And that says something about the district. So, yep. All right. If there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item D?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 spring lane change.
Second.
A first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item E?
I have, I move that we approve the 2021 to 2023 Local 70 Working Agreement for Para Professionals.
Second.
A first and a second, from whichever person Elizabeth chooses. Yes, thank you. Any further discussion? Eric did give us the highlights and his weekly update. And of course, you can view the contract as well. But if you have any other questions about it. All right. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item F? Or do we need to read this resolution again?
I think you would only need to read the title of the resolution. And I, I don't know if I can share my screen or not, if you don't have access to it.
I can pull it up here. Let's just see. There it goes. Oh, yeah, I can't read that. No, I, I can read it. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the revised resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designate hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections, not held on the day of a statewide election. So.
Second.
A first and a second. So, and it looks like just the first one changed, or the first combined polling place changed. So.
Unfortunately, we were notified after, which is, is just fine. We have plenty of time to change it. But that's why it's coming back to you.
Yep. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. And this is a roll call. So, Adita?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie is yes. Katie?
Yes.
And Charlie?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item G?
I make a motion to approve request for disposal of food service equipment.
Second.
A first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item H?
I'll make a motion that we approve the official request for proposals for food service distributor.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item I?
I'll approve, I'll make a motion, we approve the request for disposal of obsolete high school band equipment.
Second.
A first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And can I get a motion for item J?
I'll make a motion that we approve the reviewed policies. And they are 410, 413, 426, 501, and 502.
I second that.
A first and a second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And that takes us to the end of our action items. The next item on our agenda is to move into a closed session to discuss negotiations. So can I get a motion to move into closed session? And then we'll dismiss. So.
I'll make a motion to move into closed session to discuss negotiations.
Second.
All right. Thank you. So at this time, we're gonna stop recording, and we'll stop recording.